All right, I'm calling the Deerfield School Committee to order at 6:01. And they're also going to open into a public hearing on the proposed FY25 budget. There have been changes since it was discussed in our prior reading in the drawing room. So I expect there will be some discussion. Can you turn it over to Shelley?
All right. So I have a slideshow for you that I didn't email you to you yet. You have the printed copy of it there. This is a truncated version of the narrative because the narrative is quite lengthy. So I wanted to try to break it down in a little bit shorter fashion for us. So I'll go pretty quickly. There's not a huge change. There's it's a huge dollar amount, but it's not a lot of changes. So we should be able to move through it. And then what Darius and I were thinking, once we close the public hearing at the number that's presented, we'll come back to the budget on the agenda item.
You said.
On the actual agenda for further discussion because we do have some ideas on possible reductions.
Okay.
But we'll present what has been voted on at the meeting prior to this. So how is the budget developed? You all have heard this before, so I'm going to go pretty quickly. There's not a lot of public here, so I don't feel like I need to get into this with great detail. But we do focus on building a needs-based student-centered, fiscally responsible budget while taking a hybrid approach to development, which means that we are aware of keeping the budget as low as possible, have to account for level service increases or wages or other non-contractual or non-salary increases, but then also take into consideration new needs and initiatives. So, you know, we really try to be comprehensive and also be aware of what the bottom line looks like as we go through that process. So you can see the timeline there on the bottom. We start in November, December with administrative review. January, you all reviewed the first draft. February, we moved forward a number of 2.5% to come to the public hearing. And then we did receive transportation bid update. So prior to this meeting, 15 minutes ago, school committee voted to move forward a different number than the February meeting, which we're presenting today at the March meeting. We have a meeting later this month. I can't remember the date off the top of my head.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-six or seven. If you have it just to get it on record.
I want to see.
Eight?
Twenty-six.
Seven P M. That will be to actually vote the budget. And if there's any changes needed between now and then, we will get those in place. And then town meeting, I believe, is April 29. All right, so what is our level service budget? Since that's the first step of our process here, there's the only change to this from the last meeting is the transportation increase. So we had accounted for a non-wage increase that included $5,000 for transportation. The transportation bid came in $111,000 higher than we anticipated. So that is a change of $106,000. The wage increase, there was no change there. I consolidated the info, so it looks a little bit different. But you can see there on the slides that it counts for the COLA and step increases for our contract employees, adjustments for non-union and individual contracts. And then we did capture savings due to retirements or attrition where needed. And then that wage adjustment includes an adjustment for ESAR spending. So in the current year, we paid about $60,000 of wages on ESAR. We're not going to have those funds next year. So that money gets added back in. So our total increase at level service is 3.97%. Looking at new needs and initiatives, we added an additional $35,553. The primary increase here is related to field trips and curriculum consumables, which is $24,000 of this overall increase. The other 11,000 or 12,000 or so is related to the DEN program. Just a reminder there that we're talking about adding a specialized early intervention program for students that are high needs existing in the building already or students that we may be able to service that are residents in the future or possibly bringing in additional tuition by bringing in students from other districts surrounding us. That added an additional 0.68% to the budget. So our total general fund is stated here at the top. This was approved at the 545 meeting tonight to move forward to public hearing. So we are looking at a 4.65% increase over FY24. And then we do use supplemental funds of 182,000 in grants and 531,000 in revolving funds for a total operating budget of just over $6.2 million. Expenses, I'm not going to go through again because you did get the big brief on that last month and it's written there for you. So I'll just go quickly through some facts here and then some charts. So about 77% of FY25 expenses are related to instruction or teaching and learning. So whether that's salaries and wages, classroom materials, as a whole, when looking at the whole budget, 82% of the whole budget is related to wages, of which almost $4 million is paid to staff who work directly with students. Other expenses total about $1 million. And the budget does include school-based class, so that's for anyone who's here in the building, staff, supplies, materials, and central office shared expenses. And just a quick snapshot, so you can see visually what that looks like. The orange is instruction expenditures. That's all expenses. Operations and maintenance takes up the next largest piece of that pie. And then salaries and wages, you can see a repeat theme here where instruction goes majority of salaries and wages. And other expenses sort of even out. That pupil service is significantly larger piece of the pie primarily because of the transportation costs. Historical info, just you can see where we're at. We have not presented a budget of 4.65% in the last five years at least. I'm not sure if prior to that it had it had ever been so high. We haven't even come as high as 3.5. So this is a significant increase for us to be discussing. Last year, if you recall, we were much higher than that and made some difficult but necessary decisions to reduce the budget to 3.26% by reducing staffing.
Yeah.
Projected enrollment for next year, just so you can see how that pans out. And it gives us a little bit of a sneak peek of what's coming ahead. We only have one grade level that remains with three sections. So coming up here in a few years, as our class sizes continue to decrease, we'll be having an opportunity for additional staffing reduction if it's warranted at that time. But you can see we added in the DEN program, the second grade, which is currently the first grade students because this is looking at next year. That is a reduction from three sections to two so that we could add the DEN program and then reallocate the staffing and the wages from the budget for that program. So it'll be about 299 as projected right now, give or take a few. And then I think I just have a little bit of enrollment history here for you and then a recap. So you can see 2025 is at the top going down to 2022. You can see our resident enrollment and school choice are down slightly over those years. So we are under projecting to be under that 300 student mark between the two. We have talked about this at great length, but our school choice numbers are going to continue to go down. So we will see a decline over the next few years, particularly when that class that has three sections ages out. That's probably a loss of at least 15 more students there. So we're going to continue to get slightly smaller until probably around 275 total enrollment. So we'll see some additional decline over the next few years. And then just to recap, because I know I went through that really quickly. This is the important part is the numbers. General fund coming in as it stands right now at 4.65% over FY24. I did give you a line-by-line budget in the complete packet. I also gave you the last page shows central office expenditure. So you can see the breakdown there by town as well.
Yeah.
And I'm certainly happy to answer questions about anything that I presented today or we've talked about in the past.
The transportation is share. It's a bid for the entire district. And so, but the 112 is for just.
Yes, correct. So Deerfield's portion on the new contract is $242,550. On the last contract, it was $116,100. So it's a very significant increase. We had a little bit of a buffer in the existing budget already. We typically, you know, there's some adjustments for fuel charges and things like that. Or, you know, maybe we get credits here and there throughout the year for various things. So we're not having to capture the full 126. It's only impacting us at 111, which is still a lot. It's over 2% of a budget increase. So that's the driving force of this significant change. And I know transportation is on the agenda later.
Right. Even crossover, it's part of the budget. Right.
I have a question. Darius, and this is for me, but also just for public record for anyone who's watching. Can you explain if we get any reimbursement from the state for transportation or how that works? If at all?
So we don't get reimbursement from the state because Deerfield is not a regional district. So Frontier gets reimbursement from the state, but Deerfield does not. So if we did regionalize with the four towns, that would, that is one of the motivators they used to get schools to regionalize was that they would pay for transportation. They'd never fully funded transportation since that promise, but it does help.
So the cost for the transportation contract is for four regular school buses and one flex vehicle, which tends to be a suburban or van or whatever's needed to do like the Eaglebrook today.
Correct. Yeah. I'll talk about that later at another meeting or something.
So the contract has to be approved within 60 days. So it will be on the April agenda to approve. And each individual school committee will have to approve it because we're not regionalized. So.
So that would be the time to ask about why the.
You can ask any question you want.
You don't have to wait.
You don't have to wait. You don't have to wait to that portion of, I mean, if you're going to talk about it. It's part of the budget, so it fits.
Yeah, it's just general. I mean, I believe you mentioned this a little bit when you presented it. But just in terms of why such a big increase from other years, there's a summary. Do they give a summary answer rather than just like?
They don't. They don't have to. It's an open bid and we only got one bid. So I can't, you know, the question was asked, I think Annie had asked the email. When's the last time we've had more than one bid? I think three cycles ago, so 15 years. There was a second bid. The, you know, I had a conversation with group on transportation and, you know, basically they feel the need to make the adjustment to their ongoing increase in their costs and trying to find drivers and so on and so forth. The, we asked, we collect the other bid from Franklin County, which is the northern schools. They group together. They're paying more per day for bus even after this bid.
And they only received one bid as well.
And they only received one bid. So it's kind of, it's a problem in multiple areas because where do you get? Who's going to be able to step in with 11 buses? You know, and so, and drivers and whatever to pick up immediately. So, you know, I think at Eastern Mass, they started, at one point, there was buyouts. And these bigger companies took over and then they have monopoly of those systems as well. So, so what they are, the bid is at the market value compared to other area prices. However, you know, I guess the email going out, there is no competition to drive that price down within the whole market. So the whole market's moving up because of demand. And, you know, they're having trouble finding drivers and they're having, you know, so they're going to have to end up raising those, raise them that up as well.
I feel like they've been fair to us over the years. And I think the last budget, we were expecting it to be more and it was less, right? The last, the last.
Five years ago.
Five years ago was a good contract. And I, you know, I think my, I was just curious if there is negotiation. Could it happen or would we have an executive session to discuss that? Or, or just some, I mean, I know they don't have to give a justification, but they've been a great, you know, they've been a great partner for us for many, many years. It'd be nice to just know or hear, you know, hey, we're getting a couple of new buses or we have to add staff, just something that we had some discussion with residents to say, look, yes, this is a big hit. This is why, because, you know, otherwise if we don't support them and they aren't in our community, where do we go then? You know, and so we need to make sure that they're supported as well. And they pay their people well and they have good insurance and all the things that it takes to run that entity. So it makes sense. It'd just be good to have kind of a, just a quick dialogue to have some justification of we're getting buses or this is what we felt, you know, it needed to be because they have been good partners for us for many, many years. So that's all.
You just mentioned something, a question. How often, you said, is it like a five-year contract? Okay, so then this increase will, is a one, like how every year?
So there's a 5% COLA built into the contract as well. So years two through five, it'll increase by 5%.
So this is the yearly, this isn't like you pay them.
No, it's a market adjustment and then they get the COLA.
The current contract was structured with COLA based on CPI, so the index, which fluctuated over the five years. Some years there was no increase and then there were a few years where it was really significant during COVID. It also had a fuel adjustment clause so that if diesel was over a certain price, we paid more. If it was under a certain price, we received a credit. Typically, it worked out where we were paying more for the fuel adjustment. So we were paying COLA and a fuel adjustment. We've built into the new contracts so that it's a flat COLA so that we can predict better and budget easier moving forward. So that was one change in the contract. Another big thing is the structure of how they're billing us changed. So in the last contract, Frontier was being billed at a higher rate than the elementary schools. Now it's even. So that's why the elementary schools are really seeing such a significant difference. Not only was there a market adjustment, we went from 329 a day to 465, which 465 really is where the market is. And it's actually slightly higher for the towns around us right now. So it's a big market adjustment, but it was warranted. I mean, we're seeing transportation for special education is off the market. And we're paying $350 to $400 a day for special education transportation. So it's in alignment with where things should be. But between the market adjustment and the change in the structure of the contract, it's really hitting our elementary schools hard.
Right. And so this wasn't really, this isn't just this year. I mean, it's, it's the first year that this is coming into our budget, but it will be here.
Yeah, four or five years.
At least. And then just, you're always telling us about how we're looking at the long game and how, you know, it's, this isn't just a blip. This is actually a, we're on another, on another level right now.
In the contract length and such, we determined that. So we put that together as part of our bid packet that we put out.
And you had mentioned negotiation, Trevor. So there's certain things that can be negotiated. For example, you could go to the contractor and say, we can't afford $465 a day. Can you do $365 a day? Well, they do that for one. But two, that's about the only thing outside of changing routes that you can negotiate. You can't negotiate a different contract term. You can't negotiate a different COLA. You can't add back in the fuel cost because it would change the terms, which maybe another vendor might have wanted to be on.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know there's bidding requirements.
Requirement law, so.
It was mainly just a dialogue of, you know, what, what this entails. And some of that's helped tonight to kind of get an idea of where, where things were at. And just for a town, you know, we're, we struggle because you look at 4.65. You know, we can only raise two and a half and that's to run the whole town. And it gets very hard each year. You know, it's not just the school goes up, the police, the highway, everything kind of goes up each year, but we're limited and we keep, we keep trying to run our budgets every year by cutting everything. And so we're at a point now where we just can't cut anymore. I know everyone was concerned about the roads and how much that was going to cost and the damage we got this year. But as it all comes together, it's very hard to run a town on, you know, a rate that is two and a half a year. And you're trying to do everything, just keeps going up. And so as a town, we'll have to figure out how to handle that and try to, try to set the ceiling again because we just can't run a town like this every year. It's very difficult.
I think for me, it's particularly challenging, not because the number is so staggering. Because if they're at market value, they're at market value. And I, I don't think that, you know, their numbers, it wasn't like, oh, we're going to. But my personal opinion is, you know, they're not after the town or the schools. It's a business decision and they have to do what's best for their business. Looking at our budget and all the conversations that we've had, we made really difficult decisions last year to cut staffing to keep the budget down. And now we're back at a point where it feels like, like we did all this work and it really didn't help. So that's been hard for me to process in the last week.
It is, it is difficult for sure.
Not that that changes another, but sharing with you.
Yeah. True.
I just wanted to note something that I remembered Darius saying. I don't know if it was in a meeting, Darius, or if it was in casual conversation, but very common in our region is they can't find bus drivers. We're having to like schlep kids to different fields because we're the only town who can have and find bus drivers. So I think that, you know, that speaks to a quality of business that's being run where they have the same bus drivers they've, you know, they are well-known in town. They, you know, they're, they're staffed. And I know it's probably been challenging for them even with that. But our town doesn't suffer with that. Kids get to sporting events, you know, buses run on time. They, you know, they, that to me speaks of a quality that's really important to note. I know we're talking about numbers and obviously it's a pretty big increase, but it is market value plus its quality, which I think is really important to note.
Have we looked at ridership? I mean, it's, is it still way down? I mean, it has changed a lot where parents are bringing their kids or, you know, they have that ability to do that and you wind up with a big bus. I know you need it in case there's a problem, something happens at the school and you've got to evacuate. You need that space. So it's not like you can just, everybody go to Vance, you know?
Yeah, so it's a good question because it really, this has made a sharpener pencils last week to kind of look through the different bus routes to see in the ridership. The problem we have is that we have ridership and then we have what ridership is consistent, you know? And so, and this kind of goes into the transportation contract, but we're here, we might as well. We can talk about it because I'm sure the public wants to care about how that works. So there are, you know, looking at our bus routes, I actually did kind of went through and through Google Maps, kind of estimated the time now with each stop. And if the driver's having a conversation with a parent and that kind of stuff, that kind of extends things. But most of our bus routes are between 30 and 40 minutes. There is one bus route, the flex bus is very short. It's just Eaglebrook and back.
Right.
And it's an expensive run to just run to Eaglebrook and back. And I want to get into the politics of.
Yes, I hear you. I hear you a lot clear.
The, in addition, there is one bus that has kind of a daily thing around 15 students on it. So, you know, we can look at combining that run with another run, but the way Deerfield's set up, you're going to different, you know, we have to go all the way up to the top of River Road. On that way, you've got to go all the way up to the Conway on that way. And you've got to go all the way down to the bridge on the other side. So these, all these routes have to get covered. And so I was looking at, I don't see an easy solution as like, oh, they just wrote them out wrong. You know, they like, this is going to be, you know, we're also, you know, I was trying to look at some software that can AI it and see what we're missing. So we're looking at that right now too. So we do have the ability to reduce the amount of runs from year to year. So if that comes down, it's in the contract. So we can simply say that we no longer want four runs out of Deerfield Elementary, like three. And this is the route and we can dictate that. So we do have control within that. So we're going to take a look at it. The problem is, and that would be a school committee decision. Right. Because you're going to be telling parents that their first graders may be on the bus for 50 minutes. Right. And that is, you start, that becomes difficult. The problem we have in, you know, so Frontier's combined. So this is a contract where they're running, you know, the two runs. Frontier has a problem of, and I know people are going to say computer buses are even more empty than elementary because the amount of students, athletes and staying out for, for other events for sure. And so they're not always on them, but they have to get back in order to pick up school, the elementary on time. It's part of the gig. So if you're going to Conway, you know, we run three buses to Conway because you have to go to every corner of Conway and get back to the elementary school. You know, the same thing with Deerfield. Could that be tightened up? I think it can be. I think we're going to have to look at that, how we can tighten that up. You know, ridership, you're not a regional district. So I'll tell you just the facts and not to freak out people who is riding the bus, but you're not required to provide transportation and you can charge for transportation. You know, North Hampton is, and obviously sliding scales, look at, you know, that kind of thing. I'm not sure that's the direction we want to go, but you should know, you know, with the ins and outs of the program are. Yeah, so I mean, and then the last thing is we could regionalize and try to get some.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. Okay, well, it was a healthy conversation. I appreciate the information that helps. What a bit.
Shelley, do you have any idea what the fuel adjustment cost is like in the year we're in?
In the current year, I think we've paid an additional $5,000 or $8,000 already. Yeah, but there have been years like pre-COVID. We're seeing credits, but I'm not sure we're ever going back there anytime soon. But we're definitely paying.
We won't see that in the, in the new contract.
We won't. No, we'll have a flat. So in this first year, what the contract is, we will not pay any more than that 242. Is that what I said, 242,000? In year two, we'll budget to add 5% because we know what the COLA is going to be.
Right.
But that makes the net gain $5,000 less in a year like this.
Right. Yeah, because you're not spending that extra fuel. Yeah. The factoring in.
It's averaging right now.
Maybe we've spent about $4,000 extra so far this year.
Oh, I was just going to say, are there any other areas you want to talk about the budget? Or, or you have some discussions later, maybe after the year when we get into budget?
Right, so I mean, I think, you know, chair-wise, I think you should make sure anybody from the public has questions because it's kind of a question and answer period. And then we come back to discuss the current, the budget where you guys are going to, you're going to close the public hearing and then you're going to go to your regular meeting. In that meeting, you're going to discuss, we can talk about the different options of lowering that percentage.
Okay.
So this is a public hearing. We welcome comments and questions from the public, anyone here?
My name is Margaret Hardowitz and I'm the newest member of the town's finance committee. So I am here as a finance committee member, sitting here for Julie. The first thing I want to mention, I know Darius is aware of this. The town is facing some critical budget shortfalls in the coming fiscal year. We're looking at between $300,000 and $400,000 budget gap. I know there is very little appetite in the town to have an override. So I just wanted to kind of give you a sense of where the town is at. We're struggling and we're likely going to have to be facing some, you know, the budget cuts as, as we look forward. I, secondly, I want to, I've worked in a number of different towns across Massachusetts and I can't thank you enough for managing your budget increases to the low percentages you have, even though in some years they have exceeded 2.5%. You know, my experience with larger regional school districts has been increases of eight, nine, 10, 16%. So I want to thank you for your diligence in trying to control costs. It's, it's really important to the town and it shows that you're being very thoughtful of the community-wide picture. So at Julie, I'm very new to the finance committee again. Apparently a couple of months ago, the committee was talking about a budget increase that was slightly less than 2.5%. And then it went to the 2.5%. Can you just briefly go over the impacts of what reducing that down to that lower percent increase would be?
So it would require us to have another funding source of some sort. If we're just talking about 2.5 to, I think the first budget we presented in January was 2.36, if I remember right. So if we were talking about that minimal amount. So if we were talking about that minimal amount, um, we'd be looking at probably somewhere between ten and twenty-five thousand that we would be looking to supplement. If if that was what we were talking about, now we're talking about four point six five. And to get us back under two is, it's nearly impossible without stack reduction.
I don't know, did we have the DEN program in that first?
The DEN program was in the first numbers, two point three six, but what happened when I went back through after that meeting and I plugged in. Um, wages for the three IAs, I felt like we were being too conservative. This is a specialized program, we weren't gonna need staff that are qualified to meet the needs of our students. So I increased the staff that they would be on. That's where the jump went from two point three six to two point five.
Yeah, that's what I thought was a change there a bit.
So it, you know, if it were that minimal, um, I do believe we could tap into some of our reserves after having conversation about what the impact was. If we're really only talking about, let's just say fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Um, to get us back down there, but at this point, you know, we're talking about a hundred thousand, which short of. Um, staffing reductions is really difficult to do in this budget.
And we we didn't, uh, just to be clear, I guess, with the public, during COVID, we had Essar money, we had different stuff. We didn't hire people with Essar money that we're now putting into the budget, correct?
Correct.
Just wanted to make that.
Last year, we did fiscal year twenty-four, the current year, we are using sixty thousand dollars of Essar funds to supplement the budget. That was a decision that school committee made last year so that we did not reduce another staff member last year.
Right.
You remember this, we we cut staff and rather, we had a a good discussion about whether or not we made another reduction and it felt like too much for the community. And too much dramatic change for the staff and the students, so.
Yeah.
Well, twenty-four is the only year we have supplemented existing budget expenses with Essar funds.
Okay.
And that has been added back in in twenty-five, because it won't be there. We have seventy thousand dollars in Essar funds available, but we have seventy thousand dollars in sick buyback that we have to pay out.
Right, right, exactly.
That money is gone.
People retire.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, it's eaten up.
Right, and so I think the, where the school's gonna, we're we're gonna talk about this, I mean, we're talking about announcements right now, but. So if the school decides to, some of our suggestions are gonna be including using rural aid and 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 some other things like that. And is that you're just gonna create a bigger deficit for next year.
Right.
And so unless the town, and so when the town's looking at whether or not it's going to make an adjustment over the two and a half, doing an override of that kind of sort.
Right.
Are they expecting a windfall next year, which is supposed to be a poor year revenue wise for the state? Or are we setting up for next year? Um. We could, we could make the argument that you're setting up the school next year to be the reason for the two and a half override.
Yeah.
For the spending of the school.
No, it's.
When there's other issue, but you hear what I'm saying, it's um, uh, I don't know, I'm just trying to play that out because if we do that kind of thing, that's what's going to happen. And then the school committee also has to make a decision, do you put the decision on the taxpayers?
Mm-hmm.
You know, do you put forward a budget that will cause, you know, things to be tight?
Yeah.
I'm just giving you the different avenues, you know, kind of coaching school committee here in that in that area that it, the town's school. If they want us to reduce the budget, reduce staffing because they disagree with where we're going on that, they can vote to do that.
Sure.
And it can, the budget can fail a town meeting, I'm just saying, like, because we never, we haven't been in this spot.
Been there.
You know, we have been in other towns.
Sure.
Uh, where they said, you know, we're gonna put it out there and make the voters decide what kind of school they want, you know, so. You don't, you don't want to pit the town against, you don't want to have to go there, but you have to have that kind of thought in your head as you're talking about, do we just, are we cutting to make numbers?
Right.
What programs are we gonna cut?
Yeah.
You know, that kind of stuff, and so.
What do we want for a school? Yeah, exactly.
Right, and then how does it fit into the other expenses of the town?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And that's gonna be important. And I, and I was, you know, I'm a town resident.
Yeah.
And everybody knows that, and so the, you know, and I was at the last town meeting where, and then how people voted differently than they spoke at town meeting. And so I understand that people are not, um.
Yeah.
You know, they're interesting or some sort.
I know. We try.
Can you please give me the amount, the dollar then begin, between two point three five percent and the two point five percent?
Yeah, I have to pull it up, yeah. Uh. Sorry, we were at two point four three, I said two point three six. And it was an increase of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars. And the two point five.
So if you were to look for other funding sources to plug that gap up, you are gonna be right back where you started because the sheer transportation.
Right.
It is, yeah. And we've been trying, I, well, I haven't been here, but when I was first on the board, we've been trying to look at school choice and how many classrooms we have. And so we've been slowly, you know, going from, everybody had three classrooms to now, I think there's one left at the moment, and that'll cycle out. Um, unless we have, you know, a population growth here, I think that's where it's gonna be, but we've been trying to, you know, so they've been to. Three percent so increases, but with reductions in staff and and things. So they normally would have been higher if we were, you know, normally staying with the population we did have, so it's, you know, we have done.
You're absolutely correct, for the last five years, we reduced staff, mostly through, except last year, mostly through attrition.
Yep.
Um.
And haven't hired a back.
Those threes, the twos.
Yep.
And even got one more.
Yeah.
It's not next year, it's the year after.
Yeah, we've been riding time on that, and eventually it's gonna hit.
If the, and just also, you know, if we were to suddenly get a population boom, that could affect the state funding, then you would be eligible for SLA funding.
Right.
If you had a boom, so that would help us with the transition back.
Yeah.
Um. But.
We're not seeing.
But what, I mean, it's just not stuff, but you would have that bump for one year.
Right.
The following year, you would no longer are growing, but you still have the position, the town would then have to pick it up.
Yes.
So it's, it's like, you know, a little.
It's a struggle.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
No, no, I think, I I better understand um, the predicament the school is in, I'm I'm gonna share the information with the finance committee and then.
Yeah.
We'll have to work together to close the gap.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyone on line have any questions? Seeing any hands call?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Exactly, Matt.
Trevor, just wondered, we don't have the floor for here, except for you.
Yep.
Switching hats, recommendations?
Um. I uh, I don't know how we would handle the four point six five, I mean, it's gonna be very difficult for the town this. Uh, a- as you said, we're, we're in, um, we're in a huge hole already and then we've got this, you know, we're hit with all those storms. We've had growth in our town governments as well, town planner, you know, and those, not just the person, but now you have the benefits to go with that stuff. So we're trying to grow as a town to be able to take, take advantage of grants and all of these things. So we're all trying to like, set up the town so we can be more efficient. We have sta- enough staff to actually do the work and get, get in grants. We have a, a really good um, line on maybe getting some really, some substantial money from the federal government for a new. You know, uh, rehabbing one of our buildings, because we need to do our town all over, it just, we don't have enough room and it's an old bill, it's an old school. It's this old school that we've all kind of been in, so we're always kind of trying to work everything on a shoestring. Um, it it's gonna be a struggle uh, to to meet that number, but um. I I I just, without coming back to a two and a half override, it's not really just for that, we've been, I've been talking about it for two or three years, saying. We cannot run the town by cutting every year, it just isn't possible and we need to, um, we need to really set that bar again and roll our. It's really our, our EMS service is all paid for free cash, so, meaning like, you know, each year, three hundred thousand or so or more. Has to come out of like anything that we've saved in the year or under budgeted our local receipts to try and pay for that whole ambulance service. And, you know, we did that for the first few years because we weren't sure what the budgets were gonna be, but now we, that we do, um, we have a solid track. We need to really fold that in, so there's a lot of things like that where we need to really say, okay, the town has cut as far as we can for so many years, the schools have done the same. We need to re, um, you know, to reset our tax rate and kind of figure out, have enough money, because we'd never have enough money for capital. We don't put money away for all, you know, everybody's complaint is like, well, how come you didn't fix this? How'd you let it fall apart? Because we cut budgets every year just to keep the basics. So we really need to kind of have a good long conversation for a year with the town. And people will be angry and all that stuff, but we, we really need to kind of explain where we're at and where we need to go for the next ten or fifteen years. We haven't done it since the nineties, so. Um, it'll, it'll be a struggle, we'll look for any ideas that we have over the next month or so to try and, if we can reduce this a little bit some way. Um, I I but I do think, I think the DEN program is very important, you know, it's the first, it's really the only new initiative that I have. Think since I've been here before and now that you've asked for, really, that has been to um, and it, and it addresses. Early education and it helps these kids have a good foundation so that it doesn't cost us more as the years go on. It's really important to get that foundational education and social skill and all of that um, taught early on, the earlier the better. And I think, you know, sure, we could save thirty-five thousand or something by cutting that, but you're just gonna end up spending it later on on other services. And more, like triple it, you know, it's, yeah.
And just, so folks know, I mean, we'll, we'll talk about the budget more in a few minutes, but if we can't come to a conclusion tonight, you're not voting a budget tonight.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's time until later in the month and if we have to have, um, you know, the budget hearing is gonna, it's a tight time schedule, decided back to that meetings that night. But we can post another meeting, we can have another meeting, you know, in the town can be relaying information.
Yeah.
Um, as well, so when we get into how to reduce. That's when we'll be able to show where the cards are, people can decide.
What they want.
Which ones are worth playing, which ones are not.
Sounds good.
Um, we did have a question.
I saw you, Scott, um, if you're asking about the school choice vote, uh, yeah, this right now, discussion is just the budget. When we close this, there will be opportunity for public comment later on, so that would be a good time for that. Thank you.
And I had a motion to close, I don't know if we had a second?
I had a second, yeah, I wasn't sure.
We were just discussing, yes, that was good, that was fun.
All in favor of closing the public hearing portion of the meeting?
I, Daniel, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your work.
Yeah.
And put this together, not easy. Okay.
Moving on to our regular meeting, uh, next up, we are reviewing and approving the minutes of February fifteenth, two thousand and four.
He's standing somewhere. I'll second him, whatever the word.
All in favor of approving the minutes, February fifteenth?
I'm just staying.
Okay, wasn't there?
All right. All right, financial thing, this is Warren. I have a warrant total for you, but I have nothing on fiscal year twenty-four because I've been so focused on twenty-five, so. Um, warrants were signed electronically were ten since the last meeting totaling a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting back into the budget now, like?
Oh, you don't? Oh, you know what, she sent out an updated one.
Oh, I have the revised.
She got revised, it's under seven. It's in her intigestion.
Okay, unfinished, okay.
Yeah, although I could finish business policy.
Yeah. Do you have the revised one?
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah, I have principal's report and then public comment is six, and then seven is unfinished and then eight is new.
Must be a revised device, oh, is that?
Yeah. If it's not, then we should talk about it now.
Yeah.
Or we need. Oh, updated, March fourth, Deerfield School Committee packet. She added the special meeting. That one does not have it on it.
Should be on.
Oh, here we go, here's the revised one, call to order, public hearing, review and improvements, financial statement, principal's report, public comment, unfinished business, new business reports. What's under unfinished businesses?
Just policies, policies only.
We have policies A, a bunch of policies, and then remove one policy, but it does have votes somewhere in those.
Yeah, there's no, that.
She said that there's one that was titled, updated for Wednesday's meeting, updated agenda for Wednesday's meeting. Yeah, it was on March fourth that, um. It is not on here.
Right.
So we need to talk about.
To check out the calendar update, did we visit to the calendar?
Right.
Date for you. If that's okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, so we said that we would come back to this, I'm gonna get back to it really quickly, but uh, we wanted to give you. Points of discussion for potentially reducing the four point six five. We know uh, and understand the finances of the town and not the ask of us. Um, to come down from the two point five, never mind four point six five, so. Um, I'm gonna share my screen just so that you have something to look at, you don't have this electronically yet, but I'd rather than rattle it all off.
Yeah.
And read it together and then um, digest it, and I'm convinced this. So one of the first things that we want to talk about before we get to any possible cutting of actually anything is that we do have rural aid. From the current year available, we have not spent, we've spent about ten thousand dollars of our rural aid, eighty-seven thousand remains.
Okay.
Um. Darius and I had, is that big enough?
Yeah, thank you, I was just gonna ask you to do that.
Um, Darius and I had planned to propose to the committee to use these funds for the front entryway project for two reasons. One, after the pre-bid meeting walkthrough, there was conversation about the circle being including included in the project. It's not currently, so repaving where the buses actually drive through is not part of the existing project. The contractors that came through talked to Bill, Darius and the engineer and said, you know, you're really gonna have this beautiful entryway and here you're gonna have this driveway.
Well, pardon me, and and part of the roundabout way is to reset the curb.
Right.
And so they're gonna have to pull out the asphalt anyways, put concrete down and reset the curb.
Right.
And so then, so you're gonna have a cut of two feet of new asphalt, and if you check it on the way in and it's already all spitered.
Yeah.
The handicap entrances actually, handicap spots actually have huge dips and there are huge puddles.
Yeah.
During anything, so it needs to eventually be addressed, so not a great year, we've had, we're for free cash, so that's kind of, kind of a.
Yep.
So there was an estimate pulled, um, we had a contractor provide an estimate and we had hoped to put it in the bid as an ad alternate. It was gonna be about sixty-five thousand, I think you said. Um, and every project has some type of change order for X, Y, Z reason. So the eighty-seven thousand between the ad alternate to do the additional paving in the circle and cover change orders, because we won't want to go to the town for that. Um, we anticipated using that rural aid to fund the rest of that project. However, here we are with a four point six five percent budget increase, so. Um, we are presenting a different option to you for rural aid, which would be to use the rural aid, apply it to the budget. Um, we do not know at this point what rural aid looks like for next year. The governor's budget was presented with a fifteen million dollar, which is the same level funding as the current year. So there was an assumption we would get the same amount of money, however, there's a lot of discussion and.
Budget.
Um, controversy over that right now because the state budget is not in the best shape.
Right.
So that could get potentially cut in its entirety or reduced. I know that legislatures are fighting to keep that, especially our local support. Um, but we don't know what that looks like, and I'm saying that because. If we use rural aid to fund the transportation and we don't have that next year, at least at the same level, that is gonna go back on general funds. So we talked a little bit about this already.
So your next business budget, you were gonna start at one point five percent, one point five just to make up that.
Right.
Before you even get into, I also remember next year's negotiation year, so we're at a two percent this year for the general contract and future.
Yeah.
And um, IAs, you know, will it be at two percent next year?
Right. Right.
And when we should be prepared for the year and that.
Yeah.
Is the, um. That, that curb cut redo or, you know, the, the loop thing, um, sorry, not the big loop, but the one out here. Is that a, a candidate for, um, using, I don't know if you've already exhausted the S R funds or any other like single shot?
S R will not be available, that was fully spent. Um, we can talk about what school choice would look like, um, in using funds for that project from, from school choice. Uh, school choice numbers are going down, they're going to continue to go down. We have about, I'm projecting about nine hundred thousand that will carry, however, our expenses are exceeding our revenues. Especially if we continue to lose choice students and the pool's minimal right now.
And I, and I, I just got a, and I consider as I, as I walked across it on the way in, I came and I said, you know, we got to be careful spending money on driveways.
Yeah.
You know, we're a school, it's not programming, it's not about kids, yeah, I mean, it's, yes, it's about a. I know there's handicap entrances there, I mean, parking spots and stuff and that's important, but if we were talking about saving programs, yes, put that forward, but.
Yeah.
There's a part of me that says it may not be as perfect as we wanted the front entrance to be.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I just want to kind of put, that's kind of where my gut goes, I, I, the same mentality frontier, we've done everything except the parking lot, the parking lot is a disaster. But everything that the students use is getting repaired, fixed and, you know, that kind of stuff, so. I don't know, I just kind of putting that out there because I am. I was gung ho about using, you know, uh, the rural aid, like, hey, this is an opportunity, you know, we're at two and a half. It's like, you know, it'll fit perfectly to down, we don't have to go to the town for it, that kind of thing, but.
We'll have to talk about.
We're going to have to talk about it as, and the number could come down, that was a high estimate, sure, purposely was high because you just want to give, that kind of thing, and so.
And we can still add it as an alternate in the bid and then just.
I talked to him today, yes, it's going to go out, um, on Monday, so we're going to add that as an add alternate on the bid and he'll give us a price.
Right.
And.
And then we'll look at whatever, every opportunity in the town to what we can do to.
Right, and they are, I'm not making it more complicated, because they're buying more, um, asphalt, the price comes down.
Right.
So because they're already going to be asphalt in the rest of it, it's like. Your price per tonnage is going to come significantly down because they already have the trucks and materials here, so we'll be, we'll look at all that and bring that back, but I just kind of wanted to.
Be able to put down, you know, to think of all the things that, you know, kind of look at the, all the important things. It's good not to just jump on, on one aspect, but, uh, you know, that was sort of it, but yeah, definitely I want to put everything down on the table so we don't miss something important.
So using rural aid, if we did apply that to the budget, would bring us down to a three percent increase over FY twenty-four, we'd chop off on point six five. And then, um, we should talk about new requests because new requests are typically the first thing to get cut out of the budget in a budget process. Sometimes they don't even make it to school committee because we realize we can't afford it.
Yeah.
This year, it did feel like we were in a position where we could afford to add the thirty-five thousand dollars, which is a very minimal increase to the budget overall.
Yeah.
Um, but if we were to pull back, this is the breakdown of that thirty-five thousand here for you. If we were to not increase the field trip equity and access line, not increase the curriculum consumable line. We could shave another point four six off and bring the budget to two point five four. We still need these things, we still need the consumables for the new curriculum, um, that we're rolling out this year and next year. We still need to be able to pay for the busing, um, and nature's classroom.
Can you say what, uh, curriculum consumables are, the, the books and the different things needed to teach this new curriculum?
So we're rolling out both ELA and next year math.
Okay. Yep.
Because there are consumable.
Items needed to go with it.
And, and just, and, you know, from books to.
There's workbooks and materials.
Sure. Yep, makes sense.
So if we were to pull these items off, we have to find another funding source, whether we throw them on school choice for a year and then try to, you know, make up for it the following year.
Yeah.
Um, Tina has a, a rural grant, it's called REAP, that is not rural aid, but similar, you know. She may have to rethink about how she's spent that money over the last few years and use some of that to fund consumables for the field trip expenses. Same thing with, um, Laura, our curriculum director, she has accessed some, to some different grants, Title One, for example. Um, is any of it special ed related that we can pull off of the I D E A grant, you know, we, it, it would require tightening the belt in other areas. It's not impossible and not ideal.
And one of the things that is that you do have school choice fund as a backup. If we had to come back to school committee and say, listen, we need to go, we need to pull ten thousand of this twenty-four thousand, we can't do it without it, we tried to do it the other way.
Yeah.
Um, so you are essentially using your school choice as your collateral online as the backup.
Yeah.
So it's not. It brings it down, we, we're trying to do it without cutting programming.
Yeah, and if, if in regards to school choice, I'm just going to use round numbers without actually looking at it. But if our expenses are three hundred thousand and we're only bringing in two hundred thousand in revenue. It only is going to take us a few years to really eat up a good chunk of what we have saved. And the reason we've saved it is in the event of an unforeseen either building emergency. Or an out of district placement, which is really the highest risk and this new program may help, um. Not have to send kids out of districts, but that's only addressing our early education kids. It could be a resident that moves in that has needs that we can't meet at any time, yeah, so. Um, so the other thing that we wanted to present to you is the den program, talking about that as a new request, so a couple of different things to consider here. Um, we proposed with, uh, moving forward with three IAs and allocating the resources of the existing teaching staff, which was adding that eleven-five. We could potentially move forward with two IAs, see how that goes and see if we have funds later to add an additional IA. It doesn't cut much from the budget, but it's point two-two percent, which would put us at two point three-two. And now we're back to that number that we started with in January, you know, roughly on our starting point. Um, the, the least popular option, I think, for us and probably for all of you is to eliminate the idea of this program in general. Um, doing so would allow us to reduce by a grade level teaching position, which sets us up for more success in budgeting next year. Because we would have additional funds to cover that transportation if we had to throw it back.
I, I would advise against it, only that the risk, the fact that we have five students that are residents that qualify for this program. All you need is one, for one and a half to be outpaced in that, all that money.
Yeah.
And assistance that we were going to provide to those five students to.
Right.
Um, you know, if you're, you're, you're playing, if we had one student in the house or we're trying to build a program with one student, you, you, maybe you could roll, I think you have too many.
Too much risk.
You, you, there's a lot of risk that there, there's those needs may not be met in our building if you don't create a program that meets their needs next year.
Right.
In two years, there needs, if we can't, you know, get the intervention at the level it needs to be, then they may choose to get intervention that's outside of us.
Yeah.
So. Now, do you agree, you know?
I agree. I agree as well, who just need to be presented with all of their requests, the last one we didn't talk about, um, Darius and I didn't talk about at great length. Other than really kind of looking at things we've talked about already, ridership, that flex bus, the flex bus costs us about seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Um, so is there any way to tighten up there?
Is there a reason that flex bus is not just part of another route that is up in that area?
We told you in which months the largest bus can turn around.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that's something that we can look into further and, um. In, in, like I said, we don't, I don't have enough information to say this is a plan to change the, the bus routes, but we're going to look at it either way.
Do we know what that route costs us, just that one route?
The flex bus is about seventy-five thousand in the new contract.
Per year.
Yeah.
And that route needs the full big bus.
It's a, um, I think it's a suburban.
Yeah.
No, it's a mini.
Like a mini bus.
It's already a small bus.
To get up.
It's really steep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen it before, it's a small bus.
You're in suburban now for another one because their bus got hit by a. By a delivery truck, oh geez.
So one, one single bus costs us a hundred and sixty-seven thousand for one bus for a regular, you know, big old school bus. And the flex vehicle is seventy-five thousand.
Okay, yep.
Um, I mean, it's, all of the things in the new request seems like. Not drops in the bucket, but just in terms of trying to, um. Solve the one hun- one hundred thousand, they're not enough to do that and so I feel silly even asking about this, but, um. Is the field trips just, you mentioned nature's classroom, is that the only, or are you talking about every?
So nature's classroom is one of the largest expenses and, uh, we, Deerfield has the highest population of students that need specialized transportation. Such as wheelchair transportation, so if any student is to participate in a field trip, they need specialized transportation for, for anyone in a wheelchair. So it may not just be nature's classroom, it could be other trips as well, but nature's classroom really is their driving force behind the significance of that increase.
Yeah.
The bus cost just to go to nature's classroom, never mind if we have specialized, just regular bus cost is steep for the district to them, so. And we have more families that need assistance, so we're trying to provide support in that way as well.
Yeah, my thinking at the, at the moment is more so, I think absolutely you need to have equity and access for the, for these, um, events. Kids are going to do it, it's, I guess I'm looking at the harder question of all or none. Um, and whether not, you know, is there any, I don't, I mean, of course, no one wants to get rid of any field trips. But I'm just wondering if, uh, and, and again, it's such a small portion of the overall budget thing. It seems silly to, uh, to, to get into the nitty gritty of, of, of looking at that, but, but it's the kind of thing where it's like, well. What, what are, what kind of, not extra programming, because like I said, I think these, getting out and seeing the world is really important for kids, but, um.
So before we would, I would recommend that before we consider cutting any trips or. Anything along those lines is to try to fund it with another funding source for a year. Like I said, we have school choice, we do have a couple of grants that it, it will change how we've been spending some of our, um, non-general fund money. Which allows us to do a lot of other great things throughout the year that our general fund can't afford. And these are really important things, so.
I just talked about nature's classroom today with people, uh, from when I went as a child and how informative it was. And, um, how I cried for my mom when she sent me a letter, you know, um. But it's those, it's those things that you will always remember, that letter you got from mom when you were away and, um. And the, the counselors and the songs she sang and the, it's that stuff that develops a child and it, it's such an important program. That, um, it's just priceless for people and like, I'm sure everybody has that, that experience of, you know. Catching frogs in the pond and whatever they did, wherever they went, you know.
Long lasting memories and a connection from generation to generation to.
Into nature. Yeah. And, and the just, getting kids in touch with nature is really important, so.
First time away from home or a secret.
Yes, it's huge, huge developmental, just, uh, for kids, yeah, it's very important.
So from financial perspective, I think the rural aid and then the funding of those other two, the twenty-four thousand with other funding sources. Is an easy decision and that would bring us to two point five four.
The, the fourteen for the field trips, uh, I'm guessing that would be, that's something I'm making it every year, correct?
Yeah.
And the ten thousand for curriculum consumable, is that a one-time expense or is that going to be every year?
And we already have existing line items for this, there already is money in there, this is just growth.
Right, because you need this stuff, everything gets.
To adequately cover the expenses. Currently what we do for, um, and I just had a conversation with Laura this week for nature's classroom is scramble.
Yeah.
You know, the budget has this much money, we can pinch from here and pinch from there, so we were trying to right side this line item. So that we actually have adequate funding for it and not have to, you know, take from five different tiny funding sources. But if we have to continue to do that, we'll continue to do that until we're in a better position where we can try to add it back in.
Feel like we take a couple of weeks and think about the roadway, how to, is there any other things, talk to Kevin, sort of like. Chapter ninety or I don't think there, you can do chapter ninety-four, but maybe, um, or just see if there's any other ways to, to kind of work on that and then regroup again. And look at those items, they're. I mean, the others, I think the field trips are really important, the curriculum's important and, um, and the program is really important, so it's really that roadway. It's about the only thing that I feel comfortable trying to figure out how to get funded.
Yes.
So, Amy?
I also, and I don't know if Tina can comment on this, but. I've, in thinking about the den program and, you know, whether to have two IAs or three IAs, I trust the judgment of the administrators to make that decision. But I also, you know, it's a brand new program, we're going to be providing services to some kids who have some pretty significant medical needs, so I. I don't know if like that's the place to like save point two-two percent either, especially if we want this to work and we want, you know, we want to keep kids in district. I think it makes sense to be cautious about the staffing there, given the needs of the kids who are there. But I'm, that being said, I, I trust that Tina, um, and her team would be able to tell us that based on what's coming up. Um, but it seems like a risk not worth taking either in some ways.
And, and you bring up a good point that we all have to be careful, you know, between the IA and then will we have enough money to cover the field trip? And we're using, you're basically saying you're gambling that you're going to be able to cover this stuff and not use school choice.
Hmm.
So it is almost the same as saying, let's use school choice to cover these things.
Yeah.
But administration, really tighten your pencils, we don't want to use a lot of it, because that's what it kind of feels like, so you just have to really know. Because we're not truly cutting anything as of yet, as of so far in the discussion.
Right.
You know, if we say we're going to go to two IAs and it's the second week of September and Tina goes, we're not meeting, we can't do this with two IAs, guess what? The only funding source we have is school choice, we'll go to that, it goes, it's going to hit even further.
Yeah.
And, you know, that kind of thing, um, and so that's the. That's the only thing is about like, we're moving from three, because we can get to three with using the rural aid, right? That money is in hand, that's where you're talking about using this year's rural aid.
Right.
Okay, so, um, we can get to there, that's that extra half, that extra half percent.
Yeah.
You know, and we, we might be able to come up, you know, given the rest of this month, we'll look at bus routes as well, we'll look at, you know. And we'll talk about it more, I, I think, you know, kind of going what you were saying before, you know, we can see if we can make the other half percent.
Right.
Also see where the town lands.
Yeah.
Um. You know, the front, the front circle. I don't want that to, I don't want that the shadow of all the other kind of needs, because it really. It's a driveway, guys, you know what I mean, like, and I understand it really should be done, you know, if we end up doing the cut, if we end up doing the cut, you know, four feet into that drive, into that curve.
Right.
Is where it ends.
Yeah.
It could be done the following year or the year after.
Right.
It doesn't have the big sing splash effect because it's going to be like.
Right.
A little bit of a lipstick on it, you know, but it is, you know.
Yeah. Okay.
But it can be done, you'll, you'll get that other part done, that the handicap accessible part, you know, we'll be using the, you know, the grant that we have for the rainwater and that and so on and so forth.
Yeah. So do you feel like we need a vote now on that or we can wait a couple of weeks and kind of talk things through?
You're not going to vote on that until we get the, we're going to award a bid and then.
No, it'd be like this whole, you don't need a vote tonight, right?
I would like to know what you want me to present at the vote, you know, are we, do we want to look at different options? Do you need to see this actually laid out in a different format? Is there something you're one hundred percent comfortable with?
I mean.
Let's use the rural aid.
Comfortable using the rural aid right now to get us to three. Um, and then if we can find some other help to restore that a bit. Um, with either talking to Kevin or so like, see what the bids come in, that kind of thing. Figure out a way to kind of supplement that rural aid back, because you're going to need it next year and, and it's just going to be.
Well, and that's.
We don't know what's coming.
And I also want to put out there, I would also recommend that on the twenty-sixth, we move the meeting to five.
Yes.
So that it's not a public hearing, I don't know if people can do it, but that way we will have a full hour and forty, we'll have an hour and a half before I have to run out and go. Because right now it's a back-to-back meeting with, I could also move, um. Oh, no, right now you're at seven.
Oh, we're at seven, okay.
At least I have six.
Yeah.
Wait, because you're going to have to move to five, because they have the same problem you guys have, if not, they're maybe in, they, they're, they're in worse shape. School budget wise, maybe not town wise.
Yeah.
Um, so you guys will have analysts, you guys will have plenty of time at seven o'clock, so we can talk for.
Okay.
It'll be a little later.
Yeah, just be a late night.
Coffee, but the, uh. Coffee, but the uh we can keep going if we have to. And there's no, you guys don't have a binding thing. As long as we're communicating with the town what we're doing.
Yeah.
If it comes to the twenty six and town needs more time.
Yeah.
The school budget can be adjusted all the way up to town meeting floor.
That's true.
So just kind of knowing, but the town needs to know where we stand.
Right.
So they can budget off that. So.
Yeah.
You know, and I think we're talking enough um.
Right now.
That we that we can kind of communicate that.
Yeah.
Does any, oh, sorry. Because I just want to, I just want to follow up to something that you mentioned earlier. You said that you're using S R funds um this year that will not be used next year for recurring expenses. Is that the only um non recurring funding source that you are using moving into next year at this point, before we look at the rural aid?
Yes, we use school choice for recurring expenses, but we've been using it for years and years and years.
Okay, so when you look at structural deficit for next year, you'd be starting at eighty seven thousand if you decide to use the rural aid. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
This year in this budget.
I didn't increase it though. I just, and um nearly the same expenses from the prior year. We've been paying over it's like two hundred and fifty thousand plus some other project stuff.
Okay.
But there won't, it won't cause a deficit to the budget because we won't have to offload it.
But it is now.
Not next year. It could, if our choice numbers get so low and if we burn through that nine hundred thousand that we have reserves, there could be a point where we have to put expenses on budget, but not in twenty five.
We are spending school choice, which is technically non reoccurring.
Yeah.
Um up to two hundred thousand. I just wanted to kind of make that clear. We are using that within the budget. We just have been doing it for so long.
We use some other grants as well, but there's no risk of those, you know, going away. You know, we get a special education grant that part of a staff salary gets paid out of, but that should be pretty routine. I don't expect any other funding sources.
But the S R is is anyways, it was, this was just whatever was left. And I think the choice was to use to do the sick buyback for the retirements with it, so it wouldn't hit hit the budget.
Otherwise, we'd be hitting budget or asking town to pay for it.
Exactly. Such a huge amount each year.
But yes, if we did not get the same rural aid, which there is some risk of that, we would be at an eighty seven thousand dollar debt.
Thanks for clarifying that as well.
Yeah.
Um, so how is everyone feeling about eighty seven thousand from rural aid and other sources for twenty four thousand at this point?
Uh. Well.
Using rural aid.
Yeah, so we were getting to three using rural aid, right? And then I think I was.
Wanting to hold.
That's where I was kind of wanting to hold that.
This is the.
And then if we could find, talk to town, if there's, you know, talk to Kevin in his budget, like, is there any other magic we can do to help with that roundabout to kind of help push back some of that rural aid? But that, the and then and then if we get to town meeting and like we may have to just move some of that, that twenty four to to school choice, but I, it's just.
I think the number we need to have coming out of this meeting is that we need to tell the finance committee and select board that right now we're at three.
Yeah, that's that's where I feel.
And to start playing their number around three and communicate back to us where we're, you know, we'll continue to keep that communication, but we have moved it from the four point link.
Yeah.
Down to three. This is where we're at now. And what is the, you know, have discussions about the final push and we'll get more information on those other kind of things. We can have that discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah.
We're going into that meeting at three. Are we going to reduce it further?
Yeah.
Could. And these are, we have talked about the different things, but it's not going to be higher than three because we're going to just go to that number.
Correct.
But you have to make a decision. I'm suggesting you.
That's kind of where I feel at the moment.
I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding the rural aid because you said that's sort of a, it's not that it's a necessarily a one time thing, but it's not a guarantee that we'll have that amount next year or any other year because they have to give it to us, right?
Yeah.
So we're just sort of hoping that we have it later.
It's a brand new program, really, that that our legislators are for and.
And that's when we go to work and we talk to everybody and think, we need it next year.
So right, so worst case scenario is that next year the state doesn't choose not to fund the rural aid. And we come in a deficit starting in our budget is is at five percent next year without having to do major cuts.
Right.
And then we have to go to the town with a much higher one. Maybe the town's in a better position.
As we.
Or maybe it maybe it pushes the the two and a half, you know, it it, you know, that kind of thing. But that's going to be, there's so many things that play for next year's budget.
Yeah.
The major, most major ones that we don't have a, we don't have an agreement with the associations for next year's budget.
Right.
Not next year, the year after, but yeah, sorry, the twenty six budget. So and so who knows what that number is, and we know that's one of the largest polluting numbers for um budgets. And so.
Yeah.
But there's kind of, it's kind of like this is a pocket of money that we need to use as wisely as we can now because we have it. And it, and you know, we all agree that that's.
We're taking that first bite out of a five year transportation with rural aid. And will we have enough next year to take that bite again? I don't know. No. Yeah.
You know, and we had, you know, Shelley and I have been talking about rural aid. I think I may even say this in this, this group, but you know, part of it was going to start being used to offset the budget. You know, I mean, that's the idea because the state is not.
Right.
Because we're held harmless, we have to start using that money. And you know, we weren't planning on this year, but we were kind of saying, well, next year maybe we use fifty percent of it because at least we can, we'll think, then we'll cut the whole thing the following year. They'll cut, maybe they'll reduce it slightly.
Right.
So we were, we have this mentality, especially in some other districts that are um even tighter than Deerfield was this year, um to use fifty percent because we're not rolling the dice completely to the following year.
Right.
It's a bigger dice roller in the following year, but the.
Yeah.
But the town's also asking us. So we're kind of working with the town on that.
Yeah.
We also didn't expect, or I know I didn't expect that there was potential for it not to be funded at level from the state. I, with the way that they've pushed.
Right.
This five year plan of rolling out to what sixty one million? Was that what it was supposed to be over five years? And then to have it in year two.
Already at risk.
Potentially cut is.
And it really got beat up. It got beat up on.
Yeah.
Well, this past week it got beat up. So it's, we don't, they're not even, they're talking, they canceled certain languages within the um within the bill, the rural aid bill, which has a lot of other things, not just the funding involved.
Because all the power is in urban centers.
Yeah.
That's what we fight all the time out here.
All right, so three percent moving forward at the next meeting. Is that what I'm hearing?
Has everyone had your thoughts on that?
What was everyone's thoughts on it?
Oh, I I agree.
Yeah.
Going down to three is a good start. I I don't want to underfund the den program. That's.
Right.
I mean, that's not fair to a new program.
Right. And it feels like it could make, we could get revenue at some point because we have a good program like that too. Smart, smart investment and a smart investment in our children. So.
That's right. Maybe there's other students who will want one here.
Because of it.
Just me.
Yeah.
Any, do you have thoughts on the using the eighty seven thousand from the rural aid to get us to a three percent budget?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm just, I, we can't predict the future. I'm a little bit concerned about next year, you know, and what that might look like for us the same exact time and making hard decisions. But, you know, I think we, there's only so much we can do. So I think it makes sense in this context.
I also agree. Happy to use that totally.
Okay.
Our guidance to you. And then we'll see what what else can happen between now and next meeting.
Do you need a vote on that or?
No, it's guidance, guys.
Okay. That's good.
Nothing's official yet.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you for all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Okay. And that is the end of the financial statement.
Yes.
We're still on the finances. All right, I'll make this um short, but sweet because I'm excited to announce that Sue Barowski, occupational therapist at the E S was honored with the Pioneer Valley in Excellence Teaching Award. Um, her dedication to students and colleagues is um just immense and um it does well deserve rewards. We're really excited for her. Also, just two quick updates on our D E I committee and our um behavior committee. Our D E I committee issued a review division statement. Um, and we're in the process of analyzing data for educators and administering student surveys with an emphasis on inclusive community. And our behavior committee is really immersed in on the research and it's specifically geared toward enhancing students' social, emotional, and wellbeing. If you have any questions around that, I can save you the school choice recommendations. I'll look on there for where that lands on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Next up, we have public comments. Is there anyone virtually who like?
Yeah, Lisa.
Hi, thanks. Um, first off, I just want to thank you all. That's, all that budget is not easy to get through and um I really appreciate everybody's um really thoughtfulness with it. It's um, anyway, it's a lot. Um, so actually, I'm a special education teacher, but I'm speaking tonight as one of the co presidents of Union Thirty Eight Association, Educators Association. And I know that Darius is going to be sharing a um one or two options for the calendar for next year. And we surveyed our members and I just wanted to share what the membership was hoping for. So there were a, Darius, are you sharing both options?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure before I go into this. Um, so the way that the winter holidays fall, they're in the middle of a week and there are a couple of different options. And one is to allow the educators to have two weeks um fully off during that winter break. And the other, I believe, is for seven days. And when we surveyed our membership, over sixty percent of those who responded would prefer the two weeks off in the winter time. So I just wanted to give you that information as you look and decide on the calendar for next year. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right. Scott Nicholas texted that he wanted to say something about.
Comment?
Hi. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, this is Kelly Nicholas. He went, took the kids upstairs to go to bed. Um, but I'm not very familiar with school committees, so I apologize. Um, but I do want to thank everybody for your efforts here and it's very eye opening to see a school committee meeting. So I don't attend them regularly. Um, but I'm mainly here for the school choice. I have a son in the first grade who will be in second grade that is school choice and he absolutely loves it. And he's made great connections. Um, and so we're here because my daughter is in preschool and we're looking to put her into Deerfield at the kindergarten age. So um, yeah, so that's mainly why I'm here. And I just wanted to put it out there that we love that Deerfield does school choice and our kids have excelled and they've really turned around. Um, my older son has an I E P and he really has excelled at the school. Whereas my daughter has social anxiety and this is the first time in three different schools that she's actually opened up and has talked. She has a big talking issue where she doesn't talk to strangers, which I guess is a good thing, but uh she has really excelled in her one year this year at preschool. And so we're here hoping that she can go into kindergarten at Deerfield. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Nice to hear.
All right. I'm not seeing a mirror hands up. All right, unfinished business. Okay, so the first thing we're doing is we are voting to modify policies K C D, K H A, L B C, E H A A, E H P, G B E E, J I C J, K V C, K D C B, E F C, E F D. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve those changes?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Only discussion before you vote. All in favor?
I'm.
Bye.
Five oh. All right, and also um voting to remove policy K C D.
Make a motion to remove K C B.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, I just wasn't sure. I was still taking notes.
Okay, and then on to new business, special on the school voice for next year.
So, yep, I think everybody has a chart in front of them. So as you can see, our average class sizes are around seventeen to eighteen, which is where we typically like to keep our class sizes, especially with consolidating. You'll see that for some bigger classes, the twenty and nineteen, because of course when we consolidate, that's where we get some of our students that actually move in, our residents, so they're going up. With the numbers that we have, we really are looking, our only, only available slots would be in fourth grade where we have fifteen and fifteen in each classroom. And where um there we're recommending um four or less. And all the other ones were moving a little way over and then they're up one. Four one.
So.
The two stars next to the two is just letting you know that that's the grade that we consolidated for the. Do you have fourth grade applications? It does consider, right? Yeah, we do. Sorry, I'd have to get the number on that. I know we have at least one.
Are we, um, so there are four pending applications for kindergarten?
You just, you you're, just didn't read four here.
I updated it after. That's what I handed them out after.
Oh, okay. Oh, this is from my packet. Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I printed it out after.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure they weren't confused. All right.
Yeah. No, I told. I just had to do that. Sorry. I don't have one.
Oh, that's why you're looking at my shoulder.
I guess I'm just trying to understand. So um.
Those numbers are um as of three weeks ago, the numbers on the um pending applications.
And then, um, are you saying we don't have a spot? Is that right?
Kindergarten right now projected um enrollment is seventeen and eighteen. And Trevor, you know what kindergarten looks like and how the flexibility is on that and then enrollment. So.
And then um, so really it's only fourth grade.
And the four applications are the existing preschoolers, current preschoolers.
Right.
We have one existing current preschooler.
So so they're in addition to that four, or they are, they are, is that one existing one that's part of?
It's included. Okay.
Um, the first grade was sixteen and fifteen, so recommended only one. Is that because it's first grade?
Yeah, we like to, we we had talked about previously how we keep our class sizes a little smaller in the under grades that we can give them some targeted intervention. Um, and then we kind of open it up in the in the upper grades to about eighteen and then typically that ends up being about twenty by ten. So some movement. But because we've consolidated classrooms and made some partial cuts, that's that has increased our class size within the younger years. So typically we wouldn't have eighteen in kindergarten. We've had, we've run it about fifteen, sixteen, and then it's itself.
Right. So when when this has a a one next to it, just means that you don't have space.
You could take one.
You can take one or 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 none. Yeah, okay.
You know.
If she goes to take one, just do a lottery system.
Got it. It's not just.
No. It's a lottery with preference given to a sibling.
Right. Okay. Yeah, that's what I was, because typically we try to can, but you can't always.
Right. And and I think that's part of where where people are on tonight because preschool has, it's almost been an automatic. We go into kindergarten, but we had receptions. And we, and we as a team have decided that we're going to reduce the number of school choice students that are taken. This is the impact that it has.
Right. Right, right, right.
But are we at risk of losing that family entirely? Because the children are in the same school, which means then we're not gaining money, we're also losing money. They may not have an application to fill that slot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, yep. And then we're at seventeen and eighteen.
Which is.
And kindergarten is this like moving target. Does it project this? Could we have less? Could we have more? Yes.
So you plan on filling that, making that decision much later in the spring, right? Because you gotta wait and see. I'm saying what I, I'm giving you a softball, what I know, but I'm trying to say that.
We do like a rolling acceptance too, we kind of like monitor where we are, and then we'll do a rolling acceptance here if we, when our numbers start to kind of solidify.
Right.
So reminder tonight that you, every year you are required by law to make a designation if you are a school choice school and accepting school choice. And you may give recommendations to how many per grade level.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a good double, a good double, but one, you have to establish you're a school choice school, because I got to report that to Desi.
I would make the first motion to continue being a school choice school.
Didn't see that coming.
All in favor of that? And then we have to recommend how many openings or? For recommendations for, you know, recommendation?
So you were, so I am clear, you, the, the less than, it is both less than and it is equal to. So the one is a possibility.
Yes.
Okay.
And then you can say, well, it looks like you could take two.
Yeah.
And I guess I, as much as I can here, I mean, is that not?
Yeah, I would do a roll one.
Okay.
I would do a roll, we do a roll in kindergarten.
I know, I was just gonna know if they, they would, they could say, you bring them the numbers in there and they can finalize that one. Yeah, yeah.
Have we found some, okay, those actual numbers later in the year? We'll see from what I hear.
We, since I've been here, we've always voted here, and then it's been a roll in those. So if you could say four or less, I can choose to take one. I can, and given the numbers of the year, as a roll, as a rollout for the year, and I can say, oh, yeah, we have no victory.
So will be comfortable making a motion for. Prove the.
Yeah, the recommended, yep, I do.
Sorry, I was just debating that to, I don't know whether, I mean, obviously this is a recommendation, so I just didn't know. I guess I'm not sure exactly how much wiggle room, because I don't want it to, you know. I agree, the principles of the principle, I agree with, you know, at the same time, I, I feel like being able to let as many children and families participate as we can. So I don't want to press it, but yeah, what's the gamble? I was just rather like.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, because, yeah. We just don't, we, we can't anticipate who's gonna move in and Eric gonna move in, and that's why we try to keep it at eighteen, and then you see us bumping up against twenty and one.
Right.
But to Erica's point, if it said less than or equal to two, you as the administrator could still make the decision.
We still want to use that ability.
Yes.
I think for first grade, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah. Part of it being that that's the beginning, or first or second, kindergarten, I guess, maybe it was what I was thinking, okay. Well, first, as most base.
Right. Kindergarten's next.
So, yeah, I mean.
Sorry, having a larger number in kindergarten doesn't have an impact, because, well, it does. It allows me to make, make the changes as enrollment kind of settles out. So if less than or equal to four, and enrollment settled out, and I could only take one, but maybe I can take four. But if enrollment settled out and we say less than equal to one, I can only take that.
Yeah, I guess I would want to give you.
And I'm like four there, I mean, you guys, with any number, I don't know why I'm saying four.
Sure, well, I mean, there's fours on there.
If there was a situation where you, where a position where you wanted to add more, you could do that later in the year or.
I actually don't know. Can we re-vote the amount later on in the year? Can I come back and go, we would like to add more?
Because the recommendation doesn't get submitted to Desi, just that you are a school choice.
Right.
It gets submitted.
Exactly, and then we really want you to be able to.
You just have to make sure that your process is equitable.
Correct.
So that, you know, if you denied someone, that you would allow them to, you have to contact everybody, send a letter and say, you know, under allow that we are reopening, withdrawing, and you want your name put back in.
Right.
You just have to make sure that everybody has that opportunity.
Yes, I might be thinking of giving you more wiggle room to two for A and one, but I don't, I mean, that's others. I agree, obviously. We agree. Unless.
I, I do, I just, I'm nervous about this class size for sure, kindergarten. So, but to give you that flexibility, and then obviously you can just take one or none, but.
No, I chose your judgment. I want to give you the room you need.
And obviously, you know, there's room in, in fourth grade, so for sure.
Yeah.
That makes sense. And then everything else, fourth D next. Because again, you could have a family move in.
And we want to keep the families who have.
Yeah, exactly. And if you can, if you, yeah, siblings, it's always good to keep them all together. Right? So maybe I would, I would recommend changing these recommended openings to two for kindergarten and first grade and leave the rest the same.
Yeah. That's, I know we're.
Yep.
Still the less than or equal to.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so, Charles, did you make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. Yep, I'll make a motion to. To accept school of choice recommendations with the exception of revising the ability to take two at kindergarten and two at, or zero, two, two at kindergarten, zero to two at one, at first grade, and leave the rest as recommended.
Nice ending up.
I should have to take a call.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think she's in.
All right, all in favor on accepting?
Hi. Yep.
Oh, public prayer. Andy, I didn't see your hand.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Are you good with a vote, Mary? What I did was changed it to, to allow two at kindergarten and allow up to two at first as well, but leave it up to the administration. Yep.
We had a motion a second ago, but you're back to some time.
Yep, so we got an eye. Great, thank you. Perfect, all right.
All right. Um, the, next up, we're looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar and school committee calendars.
I guess I didn't understand the request. Maybe that was.
So the school calendar, there are two different versions in front of me. And please know that the preschool start date was a new calendar sent out to everyone. There was an error on that and was corrected. But one of them, the two of the same start time, the start date of the school year, and, but the December break, December, Christmas, New Year's break. There's two options, either come back on the second, come back for Thursday and Fridays, or to extend the break until the sixth of January. Well, coming back on the sixth of January.
Yeah, the sixteen day trip.
Is it coming back on Thursday, the twelve day break?
With the weekends?
Yeah, yeah, and it's really twelve and a half days, Friday's a half day.
So you're not making that decision tonight. It's kind of the first read to kind of digest and talk about it with people. The reason by I'm bringing both forward to you is because it is, it's one of those things all the school committees are kind of dealing with right now. Some have already dealt with it, and it's kind of going both. I don't have a survey of where it's going, but some are doing the full and some are doing the not. And you're going to hear, as we talk to other school committee members, it's going to probably be a lively discussion. Sorry to put it on your lap that way, but there's some that are, see the break, and, you know, it's extended to full time, and it gives families that opportunity to that. And then the other side is that's too much time, and there's going to be families who have trouble with childcare and affording childcare and getting time off and that kind of stuff, and aren't going away for a two-week vacation, because that's not a reasonable expectation. So. And it's going to be the, so, and I would say go and talk to people about it, get feedback and.
It pushes it the end of the school year from the eighteenth to the twenty-third as well, correct? I think, and I think that's what I gathered.
With snow days, so it depends on how many snow days.
Yes, yep. Oh, I see, one hundred and eighty versus one hundred and eighty-five, got it.
Right, so we just, and we put that on there to remind people that the last day of school isn't the last day of school.
Right.
You could have some snow days.
Sure, yep. It'd be the thirteenth or the eleventh or something like that.
Hi, Des, let me tell you my cut. Yeah, and so the other thing was, and the reason, one of the reasons it does go to the association is that according to the contract, they do not have to start until the last Wednesday in August. And to come back before that, we need their permission. And so we got their permission to come back before that, and they also gave feedback. That's where, while the association also is chiming in as well, maybe we want their feedback as it plays, but also they gave us permission to come back earlier that week, which has turned into a tradition, but is still there. Still within their rights within the contract and to.
Yep.
So we'll go to the meeting with two calendars.
Yep.
You're not looking for any feedback right now.
If you see errors or other concerns, you know, I don't need, with what you're leaning or any of that kind of stuff, but if you say with concerns regarding the overall calendar, it's, it is based very similar to this year's calendar. And so forth, you know.
I'm feeling kind of like, why don't I remember what these mean, but the color coding?
Um, the Fridays of the early release are the light blue.
Yep.
And the purples are days off, and the yellows are. Page to number.
The orange is half days, yeah.
Well, that's the, I'm not sure if it's yellow, that's muted orange, I might be.
Yeah, muted orange, yeah, for the half days, and then the early release are the teal, yeah.
Teal, thank you.
Yep.
Very much.
Yes.
Not like blue.
So there's not usually a lot of calendar controversy year to year, and this could be a big topic, as you just said, but what happens if they don't all forevote the same calendar?
And I root up the calendar and I.
Yeah.
Because.
You thought you had five years with me.
You would, we would have to.
Yeah, could be ugly.
Yeah, we, if it, if it's a split, I think we, we would probably recommend to go to the same, the same mode as the superintendent selection at the joint meeting, kind of go with majority. Everybody agrees to that prior to.
Right.
Because we don't have a way of doing it, and your plus contract is set that you're running the same time as Frontier.
Yes, exactly.
And if you get off the same, if you get off the same schedule as Frontier, whatever your last day of school is, family's going to do whatever they.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to turn into chaos.
Yes.
It is a good, it's a good point. Thank you, Shelley.
Yep.
It's gonna be fun. I can't wait.
She's like, it has nothing to do with. Other than, other than if we go, if we go long enough to Juneteenth, you're gonna have to pay for that holiday.
Yes.
And that's going to cost you about five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Darius, just, just curious, should we be going that route anyways? Or we have to all disagree before we do that? Like, does it seem like that should be, we should be voting as a district for calendars regardless, moving forward?
Well, that's why we do it at the joint meeting, so that, so that there is no splintering, that everybody, and even in the past, it's been like, we're all agree, they, so they all kind of voted in. As well as the, so that's why we do it there, but Shelley brings up a good point. If Deerfield says one way and someone says another way. You know, we have to agree what the process is going to be to have an outcome. And it's a good thing, like a calendar, I hope no one's like, you know, if you're really are going to take those last, those other two days off because you're going away as a family, then who's stopping you anyways? You know, that kind of thing, and hopefully, you know, there's things that we're going to have to consider, how many people are going to take those days off, or, you know, that kind of thing, but. But yeah, that's what we're doing at the joint meeting to, so that isn't done secretly, where we go, wherever vote, and I've talked about this, and some of these policies, wherever votes first wins. Because everybody else is like, what? We can't, if we go the opposite, then we're the one, we're the district that, so that's what we're doing at the joint meeting.
Not a joint committee voting. Each committee votes.
Each committee votes the calendar for their school year, because you're your own district. But I think what I'll say prior to it is if we add a disagreement, then we should use the formula that we, and that's one of those things, when we talked about the superintendent agreement thing, that we didn't agree about opening up every decision. Let's just, let's just handle the superintendent thing and we'll develop this, but this is a good example where, you know, hopefully there's, people care, but hopefully they're not diehard care. You know what I mean? It is. Yeah. And it also included is the, the next one on the agenda is the school committee. We have to kind of pre-plan it so that, you know, Iceland take all the good nights. You know what I mean? So, so there's some kind of rotating, so there's some equitable of who's first and second.
Yep.
And that kind of stuff, and the only major change is that we didn't do a December meeting this year, was a new thing.
Yes.
And that's the only thing to consider, that actually, if people thought that was okay, we're still vote. I thought it was fine. I still have meetings in case, but it was last, and December's a crazy month between, you know, different holiday events at schools and, you know, that kind of thing. In that type timeframe, so.
Sorry, I was just going to ask where the, which was the calendar for the school committee is. Is it on the same email?
Was from the back.
So last day was.
It was in the.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
Will the SOA plan?
Yes, we're gonna look at the SOA plan and vote.
Yes, so the state requires that the districts submit a Student Opportunity Act funding district plan. And so we need to get that in order for them to release the money. So remember, SOA is just chapter seventy.
Yep.
And Shelley's got a really old computer, because I asked her to tell me. So, as I said last night, at Frontier, this is a check the box for the state legislators to say that they're not going to give schools a bunch of new money through SOA without some checks and balances.
Yeah.
So there's a short form and a long form, so we have the short form because we don't get any money.
Right.
So our increase, they want to know how I'm going to spend.
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand or something.
Oh, gosh, no.
No.
Oh, you are two hundred and fifty.
Well, overall, the full chapter seventy. Oh, in that, they just, they just gave the district number. So you get your full chapter seventy, but.
It's like eight thousand dollars.
So the eight thousand dollars.
More.
More than the previous year. They require that I fill out a report. And I'm saying, I'm only telling you all this additional information because it's annoying. Okay, so they give us funding to, for our operating budget, but because they're giving us so much money, they want accountability report of how we're going to spend this eight thousand dollars. So, but, so instead of, you're reading, you can read through the whole thing if you want, it is, I have one superintendent set in meeting. I let the state know that I put as much effort into this as they put in the funding.
Right.
The additional funding they gave.
Perfect.
Which is, was a great line we made some last, but we really, yes, away for the elementary schools is, if you look at the very last page of it, it talks about what your measuring goals are. And so that kind of summarizes the goals, I think, the easiest, without having to read through all this. But we are implementing high-quality instructional materials for adoption, adoption and implementation of our new ELA and math curriculums.
Yep.
And then we're going to be looking at measuring monitoring the efficiency of efficiency and using classroom walkthrough tools. And we are going to be, well, is measure the usage and improve literacy screeners and adoption benchmarks of comprehensive early literacy curriculum. So those are the three things that we're going to be using as measures for the elementary. The other three things are. The other three things are, um, with the high schools using, the middle and high schools using the MYCAP, the Innovation Pathways. And I, I'm sorry, decreasing absenteeism is also a measure that we're going to be looking at, um, as well. Because they want you to have measurable goals as part of the funding. So, you know, some cities that got, you know, they got millions of dollars more. They wanted to know how they were using the additional millions they got each year. Um, and so they wanted, so you can see how, I guess it makes sense here, not as much for us, but, um, we did put together a plan that really just, it easily fits into what we're doing with our school improvement plan and with our, what's happening inside the classroom.
Make a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act plan as presented.
All in favor? It's Trevor who's turning on.
Stuart.
It was funny, I passed through, left a few years ago, the first meeting after you were gone, was this long pause, every time you'd take a motion. Okay, um, I'm gonna step report, um, I'm gonna brief, because I know we've been here over two hours already. Uh, I do have a couple things to share for the, um, chair. Uh, first, I want to let you all know that, uh, following the death of Nick Benedict, a very young student in Oklahoma, there was discussion among chairs that, um, it would be nice to have a policy in place specifically, um, protecting the rights of transgender students.
Yep.
Um, and we looked at a few and none of them had quite the words we wanted. So there was conversation about, do policies have to do it? Does the Anti-Racism Equity Committee get some input on this, get particularly input from the community, transgender transforming them in the community?
Yeah.
Uh, so that's where we're at.
Okay.
It's happening.
In the works.
Yeah, uh, and of course, gender nonforming and trans trans are already protected by our current policies. This is just specifically affirming dignity of those students in.
Absolutely. Yep.
Uh, that's happening. Uh, the second thing is, uh, the superintendent evaluation, you all have a seat.
I tried to use it and I get, I couldn't like, I would just. Yes.
Yeah, it's been fixed.
Okay, great. I'll jump back in then.
Thank you.
I kept going to this, one of my, oh, maybe it was just on my mobile and, all right. All right.
Uh, so we're aiming for a hundred percent participation this year.
Yep, sounds good.
Everyone can get that in the next, uh, couple weeks, do the fifteen.
Okay.
And then we'll be, we've answered this right today.
Sounds good.
All right. Uh, no collaborative report tonight. Superintendent's report.
No.
All right.
No second session. Motion to adjourn. I'm sure my select board meeting is not still going on, so I'll have to go check.
Nothing we're being here. All right, um, adjourn at seven fifty-four P.M.
Say about that.
I'll call the, give you the draft of my school committee's order at five forty-seven P.M. Oh, all right. Okay, that's not bad. I'm gonna take that. Oh, I don't know. My name. All right, so to do.
So I was just gonna ask, so we have a new percentage. Just wondered how you got there. Is it just adding on the transportation and no other changes?
Strictly the transportation, no other changes made. The transportation increase was like two point one five or two point one two, somewhere around there. We were at two point five presented at the last meeting. Transportation increase was, oh, I had accounted for five thousand dollars already, um, which would have been, I don't know, been what the. Um, I can pull it up what that percentage is compared to the contract as it exists now. Um, but the total increase was a hundred and eleven thousand. So the change in the budget was about a hundred and six thousand dollars from the last meeting.
Because the five was already.
The five was already accounted for as an adjustment.
Is it time to talk about that or just you want to plug it? But I, I just had some questions.
So you can, we can, I would, the way we had kind of put it through is, and I talked to council about that and that's why he did. He said, you want to make sure that you're clean about what you're putting for your public hearing. And so because of timing wise, you know, we got the bid on Wednesday.
Right.
By the time we kind of ruled about what we're gonna do, we reposted this meeting prior to this meeting. So you're just gonna have the higher number coming in.
Yeah.
You're gonna discuss the full budget publicly about all the different kind of moving parts on it, including the higher bid. And then the bid hasn't been accepted yet and we won't be accepting it until the joint meeting in April. And so if there's questions about that, we also have an executive session on there. If we want to go in and talk about negotiations of a bid or not accepting the bid, that kind of thing, you probably want to do that in, confidentially, so you not lose any negotiating strategy, negotiating rights. Um, so it's really about setting the higher number because you can't, we would have to, if we rose the, if we raise the percentage from public hearing, we have to repost the meeting.
Right.
It's gotta be two weeks, we gotta put in the paper, it costs a few hundred dollars. It's just better that we just kind of come and set this. And I think it's very clear for the public to understand that we got the bid, it's higher and that's why it moved right there. Then we're gonna have to work on what we're going to do, um.
Do you want to enter any more? Stuart. Numbers that are going against the public hearing, has already been announced as inclusive of difference? No, so.
No, so we have, you have your general operating budget, which is the two point five.
It was two point five at the last meeting.
Even, right.
Yeah.
Two point five even, and so now we are just dropping on the additional costs of the transportation contract. And so, and to be discussed about how we're going to do it, so that's just very. So we're just, yep, we didn't do any other adjustments to it because we want to keep it very clean. So you've already had your preliminary discussions at two and a half, which was gonna be pretty, a pretty lot easier budget discussion. Now all of a sudden, it does, has gotten more difficult.
Yep.
So I, I could make a motion to, um, to present it like it had four point sixty-five percent over at five twenty-four.
All in favor?
Any just don't tell.
Hi, Annie.
Hey, Annie.
Hi, Annie. Oh, we can hear you, you're muted. Oh, are we muted?
She's muted, nevermind.
I can't hear you.
I'm having a hard time hearing anyone but Darius. I can hear Darius pretty well. Um, I don't know if other people at home are having that problem, but.
They carry a presence with a microphone.
And verbose voice. Um, I just want, I think I heard that we are voting to move forward with a budget that's four point six five percent.
To public hearing.
To public.
Public hearing, yes, okay. And that's because of the transportation, which we
Correct.
knew was gonna impact somehow. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, also, Annie, we did take a vote to move it to public hearing, I didn't see.
We didn't hear your vote yet.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It's on your cam.
Yep. Okay.
So you're actually going to close this meeting because it's posted differently on a different link.
Yep.
And so those who are at home, you know what I will do is I will, to make it easy on all of you, I will put it in the chat. The new link, so you can just click on it and you don't do any work.
Okay, so we need a motion.
I got the kitchen power suit. What? I got the kitchen power suit.
All in favor to close this meeting and adjourn?
Yep.
Thank you. So this meeting adjourned at five fifty-two. Please, we open.
Yep.
So bye, everybody online.